Support for this production comes from the business law firm of Bailey Cavallari, where a perceptive, practical, and personal approach is the foundation for every attorney-client relationship. More information is available on the web at baileycav.com.
So I think Magistrate Duffy here, you get two Maureens for the price of one today. I'm going to start out very briefly because Magistrate Beaver Durant has prepared an amazing PowerPoint to take you through this process. Basically, we are moving to e-filing. We're moving fast. We're going to get there. We have one hurdle that we need to get over here at the court. We are upgrading our current e-filing system. That is going to take place this weekend. If we get over that hurdle, we are going to start, our go-live date is March 3rd. That's what we planned, March 3rd. Okay, I want to emphasize that. It's March 3rd, unless other things happen. I would like to just draw your attention to the fact that we are upgrading our e-filing system, our current e-filing system, this weekend. As of noon on Friday, you will not be able to file anything in e-filing land until Tuesday morning at 6:00 a.m. All right? We have an administrative order that addresses any deadlines you may have for any civil cases or otherwise that you have going through our current e-filing system. And I would urge you to please review that because it addresses due dates. But basically, if you try to file anything this weekend, starting at noon on Friday, it'll get rejected back to you. Just wanted to get that out there first. We have a lot of information to dump on you, so without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Magistrate Maureen Beaver Durant, and she's going to walk you through our new e-filing process.
She do have a lot of information to dump on you, and that information at this point is relatively static, except that it keeps changing all the time. So that plus our current jobs as well has made getting this process up and running a fascinating one. So, e-filing estates, first and foremost, our caveat. I know that we have been telling you all for a very long time that e-filing is coming any minute now. It has been a joke here as well, when hell freezes over or when we get e-filing, whichever happens first. This actually really is going to happen at this point. The last round of things that could potentially break is what Magistrate Duffy was talking about that's happening this weekend. Hopefully, to the extent that we do anything that breaks the system, we're going to find out that the system is broken now, and before we dump an entirely new filing process on all of you. So, the processes that we talk through in this presentation, not expected to change dramatically, but programming is what it is, and this project is what it is, and it's likely things are going to continue to be tweaked. So, this presentation is not a final and authoritative guide necessarily, but we are working on one, which will come in the form of a filing guide that'll be available on the court's website. We will do everything we can to continue to communicate with you all about this process. And we also have one heck of a beautifully long administrative order that goes through some of the details of it as well. We'll do the best that we can to boil it down to a way that makes sense, is intelligible and digestible, and so, without further ado, the first big change in the way that we have handled things at the court is that our small estates and our large estates will go through the same general process at the court. So in the past, there has been a substantial distinction between the way that you would expect to hear from the court in a small estate versus a full estate. That is going away. For purposes of this presentation, when we talk about estates, we're talking about the totality of them. The way e-filing works, it is like a switch is flipped, and so, it becomes mandatory for anything that has to do with any estate in this court filed on or after March 3rd, unless March 3rd changes. So that means if you have an ongoing estate, an estate that's already open, as of March 3rd, it has magically turned into an e-filing estate going forward. The docket will show up. It will not be clickable to show you images of what has been uploaded. It will become clickable going forward as things are submitted through e-filing. So, we will live in a state of limbo for a quick minute. Otherwise, eventually, all estates will go through the same general process. So, as far as e-filing goes, the process is very similar to what most of you have encountered in our e-filed case types so far. By which I mean, the interface is the same. Part of the moving deadline that we were dealing with, there was some conversation about switching case management systems that ended up getting scrapped completely, and so, the best news in all of that is that we have a lot of consistency in the way that this appears. For purposes of e-filing in a state, the major things that we need you to hear from us, there are certain filings that are required at case initiation. So, there are the list of minimum required forms. You can think of that as the packet of paperwork that you would submit to be able to get your case opened. Because of the way the e-filing system works, it is important that you not submit too many additional forms beyond the required minimum forms. Our goal first is just to get the case open, and then, second of all, to administer it in a way that we have good, clear communication back and forth. Not all of the minimum forms required to open a case are going to be automatically required by the e-filing system. By which I mean, there are some that if you forget to include a next-of-kin 1.0, for instance, then the system is going to stop you from being able to even submit your pleadings. It's going to say, hey, you forgot your 1.0. Please go back and add it. But that is not true of all of the required minimum pleadings. Some of them will just come in the form of rejections back to you from the clerks. So, know that, expect that, and also know that, again, we'll do the best that we can to make sure that you're clear on which forms we need at case initiation and which need to come later in the process, because that is different. So, most additional filings, we do not want those at case initiation. It will cause the entire case to be rejected back to you because, like in our current system, we do not have the ability to remove a pleading or two from the package of paperwork that you submit to us. We can only accept everything or reject everything. So if there is anything wrong in any of your pleadings, all of them have to come back to you. So, the, when I say that court feedback comes in one of three ways, really, it's one of four ways. One of them is in the rejection that comes back to you from the court. If we refuse to open the case at all, you'll get notes explaining the reason for the rejection. The clerks are being asked to look through the totality of the paperwork that is submitted and that already exists in the case every time before you get a rejection back. But, so, it might come straight from the e-filing system. After the case is open in particular, then we're going to err on the side of these three forms of feedback set out on your screen. First of all, the notice of deficiency. Second, the notice of compliance. And third, the entry-setting hearing. So, think, for our purposes, the clerks are determining whether the paperwork is acceptable for filing. They are looking to see whether it's something that can properly hit the docket. The legal staff is looking to determine whether the pleadings are approved. So just because paperwork has been accepted for filing, that's not the same thing as the court having approved it. You have to keep an eye out for something telling you that we are ready for you to submit a proposed entry. In most situations, that's going to come to you in the form of a notice of compliance, or if there is something that tells us we're not quite ready to issue an entry that you're looking for, then it'll be an entry-setting hearing as you are used to. So before we get into the process any deeper, we couldn't resist the opportunity to create new forms, of course. So, the three new forms that you will use the most often are closely tied to the change in process here. The notice of presentation of will, a new limited letter of authority form that stands separate and apart from the regular vanilla letter of authority we've used forever, and also the notice to reopen. So, the notice of presentation of will. I know that it's likely to show up pretty small on your screen. I couldn't figure out how to make it any better. Just to confirm, this PowerPoint is going to get emailed around when we're done. Like I said, I just didn't get it done in time to get it to the CBA to have it in your hands sooner. Sorry about that. The notice of presentation of will needs to be filed anytime you will be submitting a will to the court. So, the notice of presentation of will is how we know in e-filing that an original will is on its way, or that it already exists with us. So, no matter what, every time you submit a notice of presentation of will, it's important that you also attach a copy of the will that you are offering for probate. This form is also intended to be used, in general, anytime we will be treating a case as being opened as a test date case, basically. So, we need to know whether you will be, for instance, initiating lost will proceedings. I'll show you the different case types as we get farther in. Usually, this will be easier than it is on our screen because you'll have already been through the process of getting the case open, and this form will make a lot more sense and context. So give me a couple minutes. Thanks for hanging on to your questions. This is what our limited letter of authority looks like. And when the legal team goes through and determines, yes, we can issue a letter of authority right now, as long as it's limited. What we'll do is we'll put on a notice of compliance, legal, that clearly articulates that what we're looking for is a limited letter of authority, and we'll set out what the expectations are about bond and the boxes that we are expecting to see checked in that. Because the notice of compliance, legal, is what the clerks are looking at, that's what the court is going to expect to see on your limited letter of authority. To the extent that things are different, then it could potentially get things kicked back to you. We don't want that. So if you have questions about a notice of compliance that comes from the legal staff at any point, would encourage you to reach out to us, especially at that probate/legal email address. That's proved to be a really helpful resource. We're going to have more folks checking it even more often so that we can work with you more quickly and make sure that the docket reflects what should be coming your way. So, these are intended for situations where a fiduciary can act only upon specific court orders, including estates that are open for wrongful death or litigation purposes. Also, these are the forms that we'll use for special administrators. So again, the paperwork will come to you that tells you how to complete that form. The third new form that is worth mentioning is the notice to reopen. We're talking about this in the context of estates only because that's the presentation. This is the form that we'll use across the board anytime a case needs to be reopened. One major system limitation that we're dealing with right now is that you cannot upload new pleadings to a case that has been closed, except for this one. So what that means is, if you need to reopen an estate, instead of just filing the Form 1.0Y, the newly discovered assets, for instance, that you might have used traditionally, now we're going to need you to file the notice to reopen first. When you get confirmation back that this has been signed, then, from there, then you would file your Form 1.0Y, like always. Whatever paperwork that you need to explain to the court the reason to reopen, that will be submitted secondarily to this notice to reopen. This is more of an internal system thing than it is an estate administration thing. And again, hang on to this one because it will come up in all of the other case types as well. So I said that the interface is very similar to what we are used to, and that is true. So I tried to build in some screen grabs to show you. So to the extent that you have done work in our e-filing system, you'll see exactly how similar this is. It is important that each user who intends to sign pleadings in e-filing have their own separate account. So that will make our interplay with paralegals a little bit different than it has been historically. And again, that comes down to whether you are able to sign things in e-filing, to submit electronic signatures, whether we have your signature on file or not. So everyone needs their own separate account. When you're opening a case, you would click on the new case button to start with. Next, you'll see that we are one of a variety of courts that you can choose now, just another one on your list. So you'll select the probate court. You'll select your case type. So this is sort of the larger buckets of available cases. And after you get into that estate subsection, then it's going to give you a whole list of different cases, different case types that are available to you. I'm going to skip ahead a quick minute and show you. So, for instance, when you get into the estate paperwork, you'll see there's a whole list of different case types. The small estates are mixed in with the larger estates. There are a couple of case types in here that you might not associate with estates, but we do. Like, for instance, inventorying a safe deposit box, filing a foreign record on a standalone basis. If you're opening it as a disclaimer case type, because we associate all of those things more with estates than with anything else in the court, then the estate subheading is where you'll look. And as with all of our e-filing systems so far, you're able to go back and forth pretty quickly. So for our purposes today, when we're talking about full estates, this is the list of case types that we consider to be full estates. So, full administrations, in the typical sense of the word, including with an alleged will. It's important if there is going to be a lost will proceeding that we open it as an estate with an alleged will so that we're not looking for the original will right from the jump. Also, the right of actions, the wrongful deaths with or without a will, with or without probate assets, and any ancillary administration, of course, all come through here with the same general process. So practically, when we are administering a full estate from here on out, you can think of it in a couple of concrete steps that I just think makes the process a little less intimidating overall. So our first step is actually getting the case open. The second is where we go back and forth on whether you have given us everything we need to be able to appoint a fiduciary. And then third is, when I say issuing entries, that is the appointment of a fiduciary, as well as, for instance, admitting the will to probate and any other entries that would come along with that initial fiduciary appointment. So when we are opening a case, the clerks are just looking for the bare minimum to know that we are the right court, bare minimum acceptability. They are not doing any sort of a substantive review of your paperwork, other than making sure that things are signed, basically. That there's a signed application, that our decedent is actually dead. And most of the time, they'll also still kick the tires on whether Franklin County has jurisdiction at all, just because we don't want to take your money if we don't. And we have probably, several folks have been in the situation of needing to get those estates transferred, and it's a headache. We don't want that for you. So, the step two, though, after we get the case open, after you have a case number assigned, then from that point on, the clerk is going to look at the totality of what's on the docket as many times as they need to to make sure that the court has the minimum paperwork that we need to be able to appoint a fiduciary. So every time the clerk goes through everything that's on the docket, if there's anything that hasn't hit yet, they're going to issue a notice of deficiency that just clarifies, as of today, here is what remains outstanding. So, once you get us these last things, then that's when the lawyers will look at it for legal compliance, basically. Once the clerks are satisfied that the minimum paperwork is there, then they will issue a clerk's notice of compliance, which I'll show you in a couple slides here. And when the clerks issue a notice of compliance, that triggers the legal staff then to do a substantive review. That's the point where the legal team will look at it and either give you a legal notice of compliance that says, fabulous, everything is in fact in order. Please give us a proposed letter of authority and whatever other proposed entries we may need. Or we'll set the matter either for a filing deadline or for a hearing, because a lot of times, it'll be all of the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, but we need notice on someone, right? So, and then, last but not least, is issuing entries. The court might assist you with preparing some routine entries. Usually, that's going to be limited to admitting a will to probate because once we have laid eyes on it and determined it's an original, then of course, we have that obligation ourselves. But typically, we will be asking you all to upload proposed entries for us, and proposed letters of authority in particular. That gives you the opportunity to make sure that those letters look exactly the way that you think that they should. So to open a case, again, our first step will be to choose from the estate's case types, find the right subtype. So, for our purposes today, we're going to look at a full administration with or without a will. Again, the alleged will is for lost or non-conforming wills. Once you get into this, then it'll ask you right from the jump to select whether or not you have a surviving spouse. And this is also the screen where you will add your case participants. For purposes of an estate, our case participants are super limited, and it's just folks where the court itself is worried about service, basically. So, add my parties or add other parties. My parties is always the applicant. So you'll see when you choose add my parties, the only thing available in the dropdown is applicant. And that is whoever is actually seeking appointment, of course. On, sorry. So there is the screen for the applicant themselves. You'll see you will already be in there as an attorney for this party, or you have the opportunity to add yourself from there. And also, there's the button for additional addresses. That other parties dropdown gives you two options, either the decedent or the surviving spouse. So in this case, when you select decedent, then please also make sure that you're using information from the death certificate because that's the way that the clerks are going to be reviewing it for quality control purposes. So if you use different information for the decedent in this that you do, that we see on the death certificate, that's something that is likely to get things kicked back to you with questions. And again, we want to avoid that for you as much as possible. So the next screen is where we start uploading proposed pleadings. And you'll see, again, the document category, the document type, the additional text. These are all things that are set up in the same way as if you're opening a new civil case right now. You'll see in, on this screen, there are some forms that are marked with an asterisk. Those are forms that, based on the case type that you selected, the system is going to require you to submit these forms, or it will not let you submit any paperwork to the court. So that is the bulk of those required minimum pleadings to be able to get a case actually opened. The system won't let you open one without, but that doesn't mean that the clerks will be satisfied. There are a handful of additional forms that the clerks will be checking for, so don't rely too much on those asterisks. Those are as helpful as we could be within the parameters of the way that the programming system works. That just is what it is, unfortunately. So, if you do miss a required minimum pleading, then this is the, an example of what it'll do to you. It'll ping right up and it'll say, hey, you have not provided a notice of presentation of will for this filing. Please add a document of this type before proceeding. So, it needs to see something submitted in each of the star categories. So to be able to open a full estate, the required minimum forms, the 1.0, the 4.0, the fiduciary's acceptance, same as always, the proof of death, same as always. The reason that this one isn't starred is that that can be in the form of either a death certificate or a notice of opening an estate without a death certificate, to the extent that you don't have that ready. So if these forms are not all present, the case will not be opened. If these forms are not complete or correct, then the case will be opened, and a clerk's notice of deficiency is going to come right back to you. So again, we're not looking at the substance of your paperwork at this point. We're just looking to see, all right, they said that this form that's attached is a 1.0. Is it for real? And it is a very basic level of review, just acceptability for filing. If you have a will, then in addition to those other forms, we also, right from the jump, need to see a notice of presentation of will that has a copy of the proposed will attached, and also, either an application to probate the will or an application to admit that lost will to probate. If these forms are not present, the case won't be open. And again, if they're not complete or correct, then that's when you'll get the clerk's notice of deficiency back. So, the way that we're going to handle wills. An applicant needs to submit an original will to the court within 14 days of the estate being opened. We need it to be submitted by traceable means because while we hope to be able to keep better track of where things are once it comes here, we still have the hurdle of the U.S. Postal Service and all of those delivery problems that come up. So please make sure that, as always, you're submitting original wills in a way that you can track them. Once they come to the court, we are going to collect them and hang on to them for safekeeping. So we'll have a received wills index at the court, just an internal one, that will record the date that the will was delivered to the court. And the legal staff will review that received wills index either when we receive a clerk's notice of compliance that indicates that, again, the totality of your pleadings are ready for legal review, or 14 days after the case is open. So, it's legal staff who will be the ones laying eyes on the wills to determine whether it does in fact appear to be an original will that should be admitted to probate. So, again, at that point, if the will appears to be an original and everything else is lined up so that letters of authority seem appropriate, then a legal notice of compliance will go on that'll ask you to upload proposed entries. If the will appears to be original and letters may not yet be issued, then the will may be admitted to probate, and you can expect that the balance will be set for some sort of a hearing. And if the will does not appear to be an original, and- and we haven't seen what we need to be able to admit a lost will without a hearing, or it hasn't been called a lost will, then you're just going to get a hearing sent. As you upload these pleadings, every time you upload a pleading, we need you to include the page count. You'll navigate from the document location here is where it's stored on your computer to be able to attach it, the same as you would attach it to an email, for instance, if you're going to send things that way. And then you will hit the little button underneath that says add to submission. As you go through and add these pleadings, then they're going to show up in that bottom part under document name. So there will be a list of all of the pleadings that you have gotten attached correctly that all accumulate under document name right there. The last step before you actually get to hit submit to the court, you'll, you'll have one last opportunity to review and submit your total package. And again, this is the screen where you'll pay. So if you see in the middle there, under document name, there is a list of the three pleadings that were attached in this example. And then also the opportunity to pay by credit card. That's going to be the selection that we make in estates the most times. So you'll see it says estimated fees of $125. Now, anyone who has practiced in the court knows that we recommend a deposit of $250. The fact that the estimated fees is set at 125 is statutory. You are welcome to give us more than that. So don't feel like you are obligated to keep it to the minimum. Also, you can open an estate with only 125, should you choose. After you hit submit there, you will get the confirmation again that your filing has been submitted. But this is, it has been submitted and accepted by the system, which is not the same thing as accepted by the court. And it is definitely not the same thing as approved by the court. So when we get into the actual fiduciary appointment paperwork itself, one of the, one of the things that we have heard the most often from folks is a frustration with knowing where things stand, where they're getting held up in the works appointment wise. So we want to show you exactly what the clerks will be reviewing for and exactly what the legal staff will be reviewing for. This isn't any kind of a hide the ball sort of a game, that's for sure. It's in everyone's best interest if we're on the same page. So again, this is what we are, what we are training the clerks to be reviewing. So to start with, they're looking at the proof of death, the 1.0, the 4.0, the fiduciary's acceptance. They're going to be looking to make sure that bond and the required bond paperwork are there, that we have all of the waivers of right to administer that, that we would need to issue a letter unless the matter is already set for hearing. They're not going to be looking too hard at the waivers. Also, you will have the opportunity to schedule your own appointment hearings through the e-hearing locator if you, if you want to. Otherwise, the court will do it for you as always. We're not going to hold things up indefinitely based just on the waivers. So in test data states, they will be looking to make sure that a copy of the will is attached and that the, the application to probate the will is actually there. Here is an example of the notice of deficiency in microscopic print on your left and notice of compliance in microscopic print on your right that'll come to you from the clerks. And so you'll see on there that they will be indicating very clearly if there is a problem, what that problem is. So for proof of death, they're looking for confirmation that the decedent is actually dead and that they lived in Franklin County, or if not, that we have paperwork that explains why this was filed. So probably the ancillary paperwork. For the Form 1.0, they are looking to make sure that it is there, that it is signed, that it is complete, that it is correct, that we can tell at the court who the decedents next of kin are, that we have contact information for all of them, that we can tell how they're related, dates of birth for the minors, dates of death for pre-deceased next of kin. The Form 4.0, they'll be looking to make sure that it's present, signed, that if it is in a test data state, that the applicant lives in Ohio. If it is a test data state, that the applicant is the first named in the will or that we have waivers from anyone with superior priority right. And the 4.0A, the fiduciary's acceptance form, they're checking to make sure it's present, signed and on the Franklin County specific form. For bond, they're going to check and make sure that it was signed by both the proposed fiduciary and the surety, that the surety's power of attorney is attached, that the bond amount is sufficient to be able to open the case. And if there isn't bond in a test data state, then clerks will also be looking at your copy of the will to make sure that the will waives bond and that the executor is an Ohio resident or else we of course have to, have to deal with bonding our non-resident executors as well. So after you have passed that excruciating review with the clerks, which hopefully won't be a problem, because again, if it's getting kicked back, you'll see exactly why in the notice of deficiency and also they have the opportunity to write you a little note in the system. The next step is the legal review. That's when the lawyers will take a look through the totality of the paperwork and determine whether letters of authority are appropriate or if we need a hearing. So you'll hear from the lawyers either by entry or order that will explain in that entry or order why letters cannot yet be issued. Or we'll give you a notice of compliance. So here is an example, notice of compliance, again, apologies for the microscopic print. You will get this yourselves and can blow it up on your own screens as soon. The notice of compliance specifically instructs you to upload a proposed letter of authority, a proposed limited letter of authority, a request for certified letters of authority, which is another new form that is still in the works. A proposed entry admitting the will to probate, if we haven't already done that for you. A proposed bond approval entry to the extent that we need bond. And if there are any other random entries, because if there's one thing we can count on y'all for, it's as soon as we think we can fit things into a formula, if you find a, a case pattern that breaks our formula. So we do have a miscellaneous where we'll, we will write in if there are any other entries we want from you. If a hearing is required to get your fiduciary appointed and you know right up front that a hearing is going to be required, then as soon as your case is open, then you can go in and you can select and reserve an estate appointment hearing date and time from the e-hearing locator. And you can submit a proposed entry setting hearing that will take your reserved date and time and make it official, basically. The same as if you have done, for instance, minor settlements in the court. That's a good example of the way that, that this will work as well. So initially, we're going to have these estate appointment hearing times available on Wednesday mornings, Thursday afternoons, Friday mornings. These are intended to be super short hearings just for purposes of establishing notice. If anything goes sideways, if it's contested, if there are surprises, then you should expect that we'll continue the hearing to a point in time when we can have an actual substantive conversation without everyone feeling rushed. So, but that way you have the opportunity to determine when you have the hearings. So you can, you can get a head start on your schedule that way. If we look at things ourselves and determine that a hearing is necessary, then again, we're going to be reserving the same time slots as you all. So you can expect that that's when you would have an appointment hearing, an estate appointment hearing. And just like has always been the case, we will put on the entry setting hearing. The person who is applying for appointment as fiduciary, the applicant, has to be the one to serve notice and file proof of service of notice before the hearing. Counsel is required to appear at these notice hearings, just in case there are any questions, so we can, can touch base. If it is set for something other than notice and the required documents are filed before the hearing, then fantastic. The hearing can be canceled and letters of authority can just be issued. So if you get a letter of authority in advance, the system will ping you to say that it has been issued. If so, then no, that we're not expecting you to be at the hearing at that point. Issuing entries is going to be a bit of a learning curve for all of us. Again, to the extent that we're able to tell you by notice of compliance that we're ready for certain entries, then, then that's the easiest for all involved, because you'll know exactly what we're expecting and the notice of compliance will say exactly what we're looking for. The clerks can take a look at it, it can sign off on it, so you're not waiting on the slow lawyers on the court side to be doing our jobs. Hopefully that will make life easier for you. Because we will be leaning more heavily on the clerks to issue proposed letters of authority themselves. If your proposed letter matches up with what the legal staff has told you, the clerks can sign off on that. They cannot prepare proposed letters of authority. And we on the legal side are hoping to not be doing that ourselves anymore as well. So please plan on submitting your own proposed letter of authority, even if it comes after a hearing. You'll be hearing that from the legal staff more and more going forward. When you submit a proposed letter of authority, you'll also want to attach a request for certified copies form, one of those new mysterious forms that I did not include in this presentation. Sorry about that. It will be on the website before we go live. And it is just an easy way for you to indicate to our clerks how many certified letters of authority you would like them to put in the mail to you. I want to throw in there at this point, if for any reason you ever disagree with the conclusions in a notice of compliance, or if there is any aspect of that that doesn't make sense to you, feel free to reach out to the legal staff directly at that probate/legal@franklincountyohio.gov email address that hopefully you've been using in the interim. That'll give us the opportunity to troubleshoot things with you, because we are our people ourselves and make mistakes. And there will be times when you catch court mistakes and we want you to feel comfortable reaching out to us and asking us if you just want to have another set of eyes on the case file that is reasonable, that's appropriate. Just try to keep it from being ex parte if it is a contested matter. Small estates are going to follow a very similar pattern. So this is all of our no admins and our summary admins with and without a will. So when you're administering a small estate, the one thing that will be a little bit different is the clerk review. So we will be doing less on the front end possibly to ensure that the applicant is eligible to file the paperwork, especially when it's one of y'all who are submitting the paperwork to us. We're inclined to believe that you know these, these minimum or maximum dollar amounts that we have to, to be worried about for straight eligibility. So the clerks will be doing their best to kick the tires on whether that applicant does qualify for a small estate at all and that those minimum standards are met. We can only do that to the extent that you give us the information with the opening pleadings, so giant caveat there. And again, keep an eye out for that yourself. We probably will not be looking as hard when it comes from an attorney. When it comes to reviewing the no admin paperwork, same as in full estates, the clerks will review the whole file as many times as they need to, to ensure that the court has the minimum paperwork necessary to be able to issue these letters. And as before, they will issue a notice of deficiency or a notice of compliance. So the way this will look in summary releases, those minimum required forms are the application for summary release itself, of course, the 1.0, the death certificate or 1.0Z, and the funeral bill that shows who paid or should, or is on the hook to pay. If there is a will, then we need the notice of presentation of the will with a copy of the will and we need an application to probate the will, or only in summary releases, you can give us an application to file the will for record only. So again, that's what, what the clerks are looking at to determine whether the case should be open. Because summary releases are unique in being exclusively creatures of statute. That is an area where clerks will take a look at the legal substance of the forms in advance to make sure that it's eligible as a summary release. It's possible that if it looks from the paperwork that you have submitted, like it is not eligible, that the clerk is going to reject the whole thing back to you and ask for, for further explanation. Again, we don't want to, don't want to take your money if we're doing it wrong. So for a summary release, you're down at the bottom here, choosing the right case subtype. We have talked through this part, the wills in summary releases operate the same way. Well, across the board and small estates also, they operate the same way as they do in, in full estates. Where our staff is going to be looking at the notice of presentation of will, the copy of the proposed will, legal staff is checking the received wills index either 14 days after case open or when a notice of compliance is issued. So in a summary release, the clerks are looking to make sure that it's complete, signed, and meets the court's filing standards. We're going to err on the side of rejecting the summaries back to you if we can't tell for sure that it's eligible. And if everything appears to be fine for filing, then we still need to wait for you to get a notice of compliance before you upload the proposed entry issuing the summary release. So I know that that is a lot different than what it has been in the past. It's going to feel weird to get used to it, but it's important because it is a quirk of the computer system. And getting around it makes life a whole lot harder. So one quick little obstacle until we can get our, our underlying software all the way updated. This current update isn't going to fix that for us, unfortunately. So thanks for working with us and thanks for your patience on that. Also transferring motor vehicles, going to be different because we've always had the opportunity to have the application and the entry on the same page. Of course, in e-filing, not of course, in e-filing, we can't have applications and entries on the same page. If, but an entry is going to be signed, it needs to be uploaded on a standalone basis. And because of that, if we can tell from the paperwork that there is a car that needs to be transferred, then we'll, we'll let you know in the releases when we need you to give us a 9.0C. When we're ready to grant the transfer of that motor vehicle. The large no admins are very, very similar to the summary releases. Our minimum required forms, the application to relieve the estate from administration, the 1.0, the death certificate or notice of opening it without a death certificate, the release from administration segment of knowledge. So the same forms that we've always required, now they just have to be submitted right up front. Again, if there is a will, we also need the notice of presentation of will and a copy of the will and an application to probate the will. Because in a full no admin, there's never a situation that we should be taking it just for record only. If it's an original will, we have to probate it. So if we don't have all of those things, then the case won't be open. If there is anything wrong with those things, then that's when the clerk will issue their notice of deficiency. Same process for having the will actually reviewed and looked at. And in the clerk review, then again, they're doing the, the off the cuff inventory of everything that we need to be able to issue the entry relieving the estate. of everything that we need to be able to issue the entry relieving the estate from administration. So in that case, they will also be looking for, for the waivers and Medicaid, to the extent that that factors in, the clerks will be looking at that. So some of that will be included as well on the feedback that you get from the clerks in a notice of deficiency. So more than anything, if there is a single takeaway on the small estate side of things, it's please, 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 please don't submit any proposed entries or proposed orders with your opening pleadings. Wait until you get a case number established and then upload those separately. Very related, like I alluded to at the beginning of this, the fewer pleadings you upload at a time, the more likely we can accept them. Because again, we can only accept everything that you give us at one time or reject everything that you give us. We don't have the opportunity to delete out just one or two things that is wrong. So when our clerks are looking at a full release, they are checking jurisdiction to make sure that in fact, the decedent is a Franklin County resident or we have a good explanation for the file on why it does not look that way. They're checking the photo ID of the applicant. It's still, still a requirement. They are checking the funeral bill if we're within six months to make sure that we have all of the parties at the table in a release that we need. They're checking the 1.0, present, complete, correct, signed, and intelligible. Some of you have experienced the, the judge's idea of what a well completed 1.0 looks like. And we will have that available on the court's website too. So that is, that's highest and best for us, helps us to make our quality control actually meaningful. The 5.1 has to be there, has to be signed, has to include all of the assets that are mentioned in the case file. Has to list cars with the year, make, model, and VIN. Have to notify Medicaid if applicable. And they, again, will be checking for waivers or confirming that the matter has been set for hearing and notices of files. If you have assignments of beneficiary, then we can accept those as an alternative to waivers in some circumstances. Basically if we can tell that everyone agrees on the distribution, then fabulous. That makes life easy for us. After you have the case opened, then if you know for sure that you're going to need a commissioner, you can also upload a proposed magistrate's order appointing commissioner, just like you always have in the past. And that's something that you don't need to wait for the court to tell you it's okay to do that. If you know that that's coming, by all means, once you have a case number, go ahead and, and let us know. So the releases operate the same way. But if we issue a notice of deficiency, then you can expect that that case is going to potentially end up on hold for a couple of weeks on the court side. Because our clerks are going to treat those notice of deficiencies, especially in small estates, as y'all being on notice of what it is that the court needs from you to be able to get the case moving. So hopefully that'll, that'll make things easier for all of us. So anytime you have a question about why things aren't moving, you can check the last notice of deficiency. You can check the docket to see whether the problems indicated on the notice of deficiency have been rectified on the docket. If those two things don't line up, then your case might just be on hold. If it shouldn't be on hold, again, let us know at probate/legal, reach out, and we will get things moving for you again. If your notice of deficiency has been sitting for an extended period of time, then our legal team will go in and will set things for a filing deadline or for an oral hearing, depending on what the issue is and what it seems like we need to be able to get things moving. So we'll do that eventually, but also no need to wait for us to do it because you'll have the notice of deficiency or the way to reach out to the court to let us know. See. So the full release, the entries are very similar to anything else. Where again, we'll tell you exactly which entries we need from you. When it comes to the proposed entries, relieving the estate from administration, again, we're, we're just looking to be able to sign whatever it is you upload. So make sure that it's filled out all the way, that to the extent you have any question about that, we are, are finding a way to touch base in advance of that because the court doesn't want to be preparing those entries for you, especially not in situations where there hasn't been a hearing. So just know that if you give us a blank form, then whatever deficiencies your, your proposed entry has on it, it might come back to you with the same deficiencies. We'll do our best to, to help with that, but we need to, we need to be a team on that as well. So. Like I said, if we do end up appointing a commissioner, then feel free to upload the proposed order appointing the commissioner anytime after the initial pleadings have been accepted. If we look at the case ourselves and we believe, based on what we're seeing, that y'all are going to end up needing a commissioner, then that's something that a magistrate might do unilaterally on the court's end. If there are four beneficiaries and one asset, that you can't just give the title of the asset to all four beneficiaries or, or in any more complicated back pattern. We can look at that and tell you're going to need a commissioner. The advantage of giving us a proposed order yourself is then you have more say in who that commissioner might be. So other estates case types, the probate only, the real estate only, those in particular are going to function very similarly to these, to the full estates and to the small estates. The will for record only is a shortcutted version of the same. There are a couple of other case types that come up a little less often. Inventory of the safe deposit box, the release of medical records. Again, just wanted to point out to you here that those are considered estates case types. So make sure that you're looking for them under that heading. The filing guide will have the details in it about what needs to be submitted with your opening paperwork. And so we'll do the best that we can to make that as user friendly as possible. And in the interest of user friendliness, we also have a new email address so that if the system is glitching, if it's not a legal problem, if it's a tech problem, then feel free to, to email our IT staff directly. is an email address that our IT team will be checking. So if there's something that has gone awry in the programming, they will be able to address that quickly for you. Or as always, if it's easier to just send us a note at probate/legal@franklincountyohio.gov, then please feel free to do that. Again, the magistrates will be checking that even more frequently than we have been anyway. And so hopefully that will, will go a long way for you in being able to get a quick response back from the court. And so hopefully we can, can get you faster answers. And if we're not giving you exactly what you want right from the jump, hopefully you'll, you'll know why not sooner than what it has been in the past. I know that I saw some questions come in, but I couldn't say what they were.
I've been trying to answer the ones that I can answer quickly as we went along, just to give you a break. Magistrate Beaver Durant, but there are two in here that I wanted you to answer because I wasn't exactly sure. So there is one from Tony Metcalf Henry. Will the will copy be uploaded separately as an exhibit to the notice of presentation of will? Or do you want it all in one package?
As long as it's there, then you can either upload it as part of one big PDF or you can upload it separately. Whatever is easiest for you is fine by us. The clerks are just going to be looking to make sure that both components are there.
And then I think that's probably the same answer for Paul Bryson, who said for supporting documents for value, like auditor summaries, should those be part of the 5.1 or uploaded as a separate document type? I suppose they could be an exhibit, right? Or they could be in with the 5.1?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Do we have any, we have a final question here that I wasn't able to get to from Holly Oak. What about situations where we want to submit supporting documents for the court to review, but not file? Like bank statements? There's going to be a code for those, is that right?
Yes. So that's something that will come up more and more often as we get into e-filing all of our other case types, especially on the account side. We have a code, and again, this will be in the filing guide that comes to you as well. As long as you upload it as a, a certain type of document, then it will not automatically be filed and the clerks know to basically delete that out of the official record that will show up through the e-filing system. So we'll, we'll have it internally, but it won't show on the docket.
All right. So we have some more here. I'm trying to answer the, I'm, I'm dropping the, the, if the, the tech email address into the chat. You guys want to check that out? However, we're also going to send out this PDF. It's e-filing-probate@franklincountyohio.gov. Here's a question from J. Douglas Stewart. For death certificates that are later amended to correct the, the social security number of the decedent, assume an attorney filed the death certificate with an incorrect SSN suggestions? I don't know. I, I think, is there a way to change the docket code? That's, that's one we haven't thought about.
Well, hopefully when you upload the death certificate, you will first go in and redact the social security number so that that isn't showing in the actual case file itself. So if you're just updating the, the SOSH, then that's not something that the court needs to worry about so much. If you're updating a different aspect of the death certificate, then that's one where I would encourage you to reach out to the probate/legal and we'll figure out the cleanest way to get that done for you. Probably it'll just be a matter of making sure that one of the magistrates is, is looking out for that paperwork so that the clerks don't automatically kick it back to you.
And so this is a question I had. Is there a way to include a decedent's AK in the case title?
I believe that that is one of the, when you're creating the, the case itself originally and you're adding the decedent as a party originally, I'm pretty sure that there's an AK in that.
A separate box or you just put it all in the same box?
I think it's a separate box.
Okay. All right. Question, what about cases already open? I believe in that case you file your notice to reopen first, or else you won't be able to file anything. That's, that is the threshold for reopening a case, that form that Maureen showed us earlier.
Yep. So, and for the, for the cases that are currently open, then again, on March the 3rd, here's hoping, or whatever day that switch flips, then from that point, whatever your next filing is, it'll need to be submitted through the e-filing portal. So you'll need to make sure that you, that you are in there and that you have access to those cases so that you can keep on time with, with your pleadings going forward. Because there will be a series of these where we're, we're shifting gears midstream, not to mix metaphors, but that'll be an interesting challenge.
If you're in a boat, that's when you shift gears. Then we're all in the same boat, you guys. We're all in the same boat. Any more questions? Well, I know you probably have a lot of questions. Our, our goal is communication, transparency. We, we're here for you. We know that this, you know, there's going to be a lot of unknown territory that we're going into as we, as we move forward. So please, please let us know in that probate, if it's a legal issue or a process issue, we want to know in probate/legal@franklincountyohio.gov, send us that question. If it appears to be a tech issue, glitches, error messages, that sort of thing, send it to the e-file-probate, e-filing, I'm sorry, e-filing-probate@franklincountyohio.gov. We're going to get through this, but you know, it's going to be a collaborative, collaborative process in a lot of ways.
Yes. Thank you all in advance for your patience with it. And again, there's nothing like knowing for sure that we have been saying this is imminent forever and ever and ever. And then to drop it on you as quick as it feels like we actually are, just know that we've been doing our best to get this out and available as, as quickly as possible. And we didn't think it was going to go until all of a sudden it did. And fine golly, we could have either held things up longer or we could just plow into it altogether. So we're gonna, we're gonna figure it out together and we'll hope that, that we have thought of as many things as possible and ironed out as many glitches as possible in advance. And no matter what, very soon this will be easier and if nothing else, lots of ways to reach us.
I, I just want to remind you, I know magistrate Beaver Durant mentioned this, but she has prepared a filing guide that is extremely detailed. And it is not on our website yet, but it will be on our website before we go live. And I think it's a great resource for everybody who has little questions. Can it, you know, what are the, what are the documents I need for case initiation in a particular case, et cetera? It's all going to be there. So look for that. That is going to be available on our website. All right. Well, we've taken a lot of your time today. We appreciate it very much. Please don't hesitate to reach out with, with questions and see you later.
Well done. Thank you very much.